Tampa Bay is like no place else.
Wait, you can't recycle the bag. You have to throw it away.
Proper recycling keeps it that way for everyone. Bags tangling machinery and can bring sorting efforts to a halt.
No bags.
Trash the bags and keep our recycling program moving forward.
No mommy, no plastic bags.
Do your part to keep our recycling bag free. Trash the Tanglers or return them to participating retailers. For more information, visit TampaBayRecycles.org.
And Kevin Bricky, Director of Management and Budget, has introduced the first topic, which is about the board's nonprofit policy. This topic was requested by Commissioner Bowles at multiple board meetings. And so, and that was a first announcement at board meeting. The second topic will be on the solid waste assessment. And that will be introduced by the management director of solid waste. So we will turn it over to Kevin Bricky to begin with his questions.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Kevin Bricky, Management and Budget. As County Administrator mentioned, today is our second of four workshops. And just to review the calendar, today we'll be speaking about nonprofits, solid waste, and the solid waste assessment. On June 11th will be the status of the budget at that time. And July 23rd, the topic will be transportation. We are looking to receive the early estimates of property values from the property appraiser at the end of this week. The June 1 numbers, the July 1 numbers, which are the preliminary certified numbers that go into the TRIM notices or the truth and millage notices are expected for July 1. County Administrator will deliver her recommended budget at the board's meeting on July 16th, on July 30th. Within the truth and millage process, that very prescribed state process, the board will be setting its truth and millage or TRIM millage rates. And the flagging process will occur during August. The property appraiser sends out those millage, truth and millage notices to parcel owners. And in September, we'll have our two public hearings. September 18th is when the board will adopt the final budget and final millage rates. I will start out by introducing the nonprofit portion of this workshop. The board approved a new policy on February 7th, 2024, with an effective date of October 2024. And this policy established funding guidelines to ensure that the county is fiscally responsible in the allocation of county general funds. This nonprofit policy applied to the two county general funds, the countywide general fund and the unincorporated area general fund. Some of the key points, prior to presenting the board with a nonprofit funding agreement for approval, these guidelines need to be met. A nonprofit shall provide its most recently filed form, IRS Form 990, which is an IRS form for nonprofits and lists quite a lot of financial information. A nonprofit shall provide information identifying all governmental funding sources compared to its total revenues. Any new proposal for a nonprofit, or a scope change, or an increase in funding should be supported by a written funding proposal provided to the board at least one week in advance of a board's vote to award funding. It has to demonstrate enhanced services to county residents and provide positive community outcome measures. The county administrator is not permitted to propose new increased or scope changes for nonprofit funding. These things need to be board initiated. All future nonprofit awards shall be one time, so those, that's current now. And annual funding for each nonprofit would be placed and show up in the budget book in the nonprofit area of the county's annual budget. Since 1998, fiscal year 1998, this is a history of nonprofit funding within the countywide general fund. In 1998, it was $5.6 million. There was a bit of an increase through FY07. During the recession years after FY07, there was a decline. It currently stands in FY25 at about $15.4 million. Now, there are 130 nonprofits in the nonprofit area of the county's budget for fiscal year 25, within those two countywide general fund and the unincorporated area general fund. This slide is looking at when did, among those 130, when was the first appearance of a particular nonprofit in the budget? 24 of the 130 appeared prior to fiscal year 2000. During the period of fiscal year 2001 through fiscal year 15, there was some increases, some appearances, about 19. 17 appeared in fiscal year 16 to 20, and 70 appeared FY25, 21 to 25. Now, of course, some of those in FY25, the ones in FY25 are one time. Many of these have been recurring, certainly since, some before 2000. And this slide takes a look at those same 130, but looks at their first appearance by the amount of dollars budgeted in FY25. So for those that appeared prior to 2000, they are in the county's fiscal year 25 budget at $3.8 million. The ones that appeared thereafter were relatively small numbers, 600,000, 01 to 05. You see an increase starting in fiscal year 11, 1.2 million. Fiscal year 16 to 20, 2.4 million. And then, within the last five years, that number is $6.8 million, out of the 15.4 total of those 130. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I have a handout that I'd like to ask for. We'll make a question later. Is that required?
It does.
Okay.
Because the rules say that all handouts have to be 24 hours, and everything else.
Okay. If that's... Just so you could follow up with me. So, again, motion by Commissioner Bowles, and Commissioner Myers of the 2024 rules. Please go ahead.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes, yes, yep, yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0.
So I've got pictures and I've got words, so you can follow up either way. And just for the general public.
Yes, yes.
I'll have this available on my track, Commissioner Bowles. So what we did was this. One of the things that I think that this board has struggled with in the past, and I know that this has been a contentious issue for many years to this day, quite a few times over the last several years. That's a question, a matter that affects everybody who's sitting around here at the time. But I wanted to kind of, when I got into office now, look at this through an unbiased perspective and from a fresh, you know, a fresh lens. And also approach it from the perspective of the board's group and equity and financial stewardship. And looking at the current policy and what my staff has done and what it's under consideration. I just feel that the policy is a little inactive. I think the one pager really could, at least to have one page on it. Especially when you start thinking about some of the things that were pressed upon us and do, where we're looking at other, other awards, other policies that we have with us that allow us to kind of make these decisions. And I just wanted to kind of have this little dialogue today so that we don't have to continue to get a Thursday surprise and then kind of make a decision over three or four days. So along with that, kind of, we're embracing this Doge mentality with the state and with the government, and now here locally with our ad hoc committee that we have coming up. I believe we can make these changes and improvements without having to have that outside interference and the board waiting for someone to come and tell us what to do. I think we can figure out how to do each changes ourselves. And eventually, when we start thinking about the unknown realm that Alhassan is walking us into with the possibility of changing the way we are going to be collecting funds to support not only our basic operations, but to support certainly the nonprofits that we all believe are certainly vital and core of our community. We really kind of really relate to it. Hopefully, continue to work on the lines of efficiency, transparency, and ensuring our impact is all responsible. With that, again, this kind of lays out the general perspective of some of the things that I've been looking at, some of the things that we have. There was a few items that jumped off the page a bit. When I scroll back in, there's some nonprofits that have been receiving funds for more than 30 years, but no one really taking a look at why they were getting what they're getting. The amounts, some of the amounts are, I'll say, kind of minimal. But if someone's giving $11,215 for 30 years, why are they still getting that money? If they had a purpose then, it's that same purpose today. And at the very least, if we approach this, this provides a couple of opportunities to reduce the total number, to reduce the recurring funding to a more manageable amount. Of those efficiency months, our staff are not having to chase people down for compliance and additionally having to manage the 130, the loads. Provides an off-ramp for those to support self-sustainability for the EPOs that are out there, and as well as providing some transparency and accountability through performance metrics. And finally, what I think is most important is that it provides one policy, one standard for all. We don't have a before and after February 24th. So since we can't really talk about things with each other outside of this form, this is why I wanted to bring it up. And at least provide some bits of feedback and getting an idea of where I'm coming from, my perspective, and how I think that everybody can win from this. And again, how we can get a little more manageable. If you look at the graph that came up earlier, when you jumped up 70 in four years, I mean, that's ridiculous. 70 nonprofits in four years. So, you know, at what point do we say no? When I stop at 70, why not 100, 200? Where's it at? So I think at some point, we need to really kind of pull the reins back and really look into what we can and can't do. And I think this would be the first step in doing that. And I have worked with staff, Bonnie's staff, Tom's staff, that kind of related to this a little bit. So it wasn't in a vacuum. We went back as far as we could to paper records, going back into the 80s, that again, we have a lot of nonprofits that are still getting money from the Bezansky days, Echamatham days, Norman days, Vermin days, White days. And continuing to, at what, at what point do we say enough is enough? I think at this point, at the very least, with the off-ramp, we provide that value.
Commissioner Bowles?
Chair? This being the first time I've looked at it, I just have a couple of questions. I probably will circle back. So where it says here on the first little period graph, it reduces the total number of EPOs to less than 100, I figured that might be by that. Secondly, when you make the full transition, so on the third page, it says that basically all of the legacies will be phased into this. And so essentially, they're all going to have, really, what process look like? So if we're phasing them out, and they're only talking about commissioners' directed funds or flag funds, whatever it is you want to call them, 500, how does that even give that on the list? Does that mean some of them are not quite following the back transition?
So first of all, it is to reduce it below. I mean, just that the sheer number, we're at 130. Now, we have some core EPOs that, let's say, like Safe and Sound and Priceset. Those would kind of be exempted because they do services that can't be around most agencies, making them, those are in our facilities, are doing good work in the community. Those are the ones that we would kind of be left on. But for those that are not, you know, kind of in that realm, we need to start calling some of those. So it's getting under 100. We were at 30, now we're at over 100. A second answer to your question, or answer to your second question, I should say. So rather than just cut it all off, which I know that would probably be your preference in some circles, but giving an off-ramp, providing, you know, so next year will be 75% of budgeted amount, and next year will be 50% of nothing. Again, trying to promote self-sustainability and, you know, private stakeholder engagement as well. That at the end of that, so say fiscal year 29 would be, where is it? And at that point, we would allocate, each commissioner would be evidently allocated $500,000 to put towards a nonprofit. So that, that's where the three and a half million goes from. That's just a random number, I think, could be less, could be more. But it seems like that would be fair and reasonable. That you could take that $500,000, if you wanted to put it towards the zoo or whatever, or maybe for daycare employees that goes low, or whatever, I think you could do that. If it was a need to do more, you could use your flag money, whatever that would... Because that's an unknown, we don't know if that's based on what the county administrator provides us through the budget process. So you could supplement with that. And from that point forward, it would have to be every year. You have this two-tier system now, you have the before and after. Why shouldn't they be different?
I'm just saying that it'll definitely be under 100 if that goes. I said you're phasing them off, and we said, okay, I'm following you.
Yeah, yeah, but that's, that's, they're kicking up the idea, but it's not a surprise.
And who's going to decide the list of ones that are recurring? So for example, you mentioned that that's a, you know, partially country company, just visiting or building state.
Yeah, so Tom and I had talked about some of the ones that kind of do absolutely poor services that we would be performing, me and the county would be performing, where they occupy one of our buildings. And that those would be the ones that would be changing throughout.
Excellent.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. I'm a little puzzled. So when we say pass, there are four commissioners that have been around for the past 30 days, 30 years, that are still funding, okay? So you're saying you would like to perhaps eliminate some of those nonprofits that's receiving those dollars?
No, it would not be eliminating them, it would be eliminate.
Gradually.
It would be eliminate the recurring automatic funding. If you want something that Commissioner Bezansky put on there 30 years ago, you could absolutely refund the flag.
So in other words, you're more concerned with the current commissioners, perhaps?
I'm concerned with the...
This whole dollar amount now?
The dollar amount, and the fact that we have over 130, 70 in the last 40 years, I think that.
Right.
When do we say enough?
Well, I think in the past four years, I probably added quite a few myself because in my district, which is the underserved, I want to make sure that the underserved has the same opportunity as within the other districts and countywide to receive funding to provide services to the youth. And so that's really important to me. I mean, we have issues going on right now, where I'm board member to ELC and the children's board, and we have at early, early ELC, parents that are not able for their child with a summer program, get ready for PPK. So we had to find additional dollars to make that happen. So we're always looking for funding. But if a nonprofit is providing the services, and I make sure, because I'm always talking with Shannon Rose, I just talked with her before, I'm like, here to see where my nonprofits are. They are performing, they're meeting all the county requirements, and so doing the service of debris, the invoices are coming in correctly and all of that. Then I can see, yes, you fund those organizations because they are in compliance with what we're asking them to do. I mean, we do have some nonprofits that are funded, and all this here to be in compliance with the county. But I don't think we should hold... The current board, the current leadership...
Somewhat along with all the previous, because, oh, that's too loud. When I leave office, you know, whoever come in as a new District 3 commissioner, they might not want to fund the same programs that I funded.
But, but to your, to that point? If it was before 24, it's flagged, they are going to be funding it?
Yes, yes.
So then the next commissioner that replaces you will be basically having to support your nonprofits without their input? This is...
No, no, hold on. You have to understand, when a new commissioner comes on, this board would approve that budget. So they have no say-so in the, in the deal. The current commissioner, like in 2026, I'm up for reelection, okay? I have the opportunity to approve that budget for 2026, going in 2026, 2027. Those commissioners don't have that opportunity. The new commissioners coming on board won't have that opportunity. So they have to wait to the next fiscal year to make the changes, okay? Because we're doing that budget in September, I'm still in the seat, okay, for October 1. So the next fiscal year, '27, '28, then they can make whatever changes they want. So it's a fair game, it's just the way we're set up. That that commissioner approving that budget for the county, that those items are a part of that budget. It's not that the new commissioners don't have that opportunity. They just have to wait to the next fiscal year, and they're welcome to do whatever because, you know, I'll probably be out of office. But that's how it works. You know, that's how it works in 2020.
So because it's been that way, it should stay that way?
No, that's not what I'm saying. That's when we should make the change, okay? But we never made it.
Right.
We never made it over the years. But all I'm saying is the current commissioner that is sitting, and a new commissioner comes on board, they're upset because they didn't participate in the budget, but they wouldn't participate in the budget process, okay? But the next year, they will have that opportunity.
Well...
Then the other thing, too, I raised the issue.
Sure.
You said with the $500,000 in addition to flag money. So why are we going to get all this money? We going to get $500,000 plus whatever we get for flag?
So, so hold on, so...
I'm just trying to figure this out, what I was listening.
Well, right now, i- if, if we got the 500 per, we would be saving three, what was it? 6.8? So we would be saving 3.3 million right off the bat. That's a savings of $3.3 million we're already saving, that we're not having to fund, the recurring nonprofits that have been on the books for over 30 years, some of them.
Well, I would support it this way.
If you want to support...
I came into office in 2020, and all between 2019, we can do whatever we want to do. But those that I have reoccurring as of November 20th, I'm going to support those projects.
And you can, and that's where you could use that 500 plus any of your flag money.
I mean, it's all that money?
But you'd have to do it every single year. You'd have to make a positive movement to do so. It wouldn't just be automatic. Right now, it's automatic while you sit here.
Well, I always make sure my projects are automatically funded. Am I right, Tom? I call Tom every year to make sure, you know, because I make sure, if my nonprofits are not funding, I mean, not providing the services that they should, I don't recommend them for funding again. I'm sorry, I just, the way I feel about it.
And that's a fantastic way to approach it.
But you have to be in compliance with the county's asking. But you have to be in compliance with the counties asking you to do, it's not because you know Commissioner Myers, you have to perform the service.
Agree.
Okay, so that, I mean, that's really important, that's what I look at when I'm dealing with my nonprofits, if they're not cutting the muscle, they can't cut another dollar from the county, it's just, it's simple, simple. But I, I'm just trying to figure additional dollars.
Not additional.
No, I mean, a half a million, plus the flag, flag money?
Whatever you got, for whatever, whatever that flag money would be, it would still be less than, most likely less than what we're paying out now.
Okay, Commissioner Wilston?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be with you on whatever you want on this. It's, it's a huge problem. We've, we've had this conversation before, it's not a surprise to at least five of us. The 30-year-old nonprofits, 20-year-olds, no one has a right to previous-year money, right? Because we have every, we have needs, new needs every year. No one should be getting reoccurring funds. There was one that was getting $500,000 a year, and that was negotiated in a pretty wild way through text messages. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll push those out to the press sometime, because people didn't realize that the commissioner used their personal cell phone, even though it was their government one. It's pretty good conversations, but it, there should be no permanent reoccurring revenue for any of these non-government organizations. The permanent reoccurring revenue should be the ones that are bona fide government entities. I have always said that the commissioners have the discretion of some, some, some items are a really good item. If you looked at the graph, which I, I wish could have been included on this today, it shows the history, and then I'll let everybody politically figure out, but it was pretty stable until 2016. And then it starts going a hard spike up from there, and then it's labeled, leveled back off the past two years. So I'll let everybody figure out what happened between 2016 and 2022. And at one point, Bonnie was giving, giving each commissioner $2 million a year. So that's $14 million a year that they were adding on, and it was just the Wild West. I mean, it was nonprofits gone wild with our property taxes for about six years there, and it needs to be reined in. So I'm just going to, there's a lot of good options here, no one should be acting surprised, no one should, should feel entitled that nonprofits, just because it's there, should continue to get reoccurring revenue. You know, there's a difference between, I remembered when we were having the conversation, one thing that the chair put out, which he was absolutely correct on, is that, you know, over the, the decades, he hasn't really been a, a big participator in these, and so one of his items was like, it was like a swimming pool, but then out of the swimming pool, the kids are getting trained not to drown, but then also the sheriff's team used that as a training facility. And, okay, that is like a great bona fide use of supporting that organization, and then the public getting some payback. And, and when those items get presented, a commissioner should have the flexibility to say, hey, this is a good opportunity for the, the community. I, I will say, though, that without a doubt, and I can prove it easily, these funds get used to get organizations to support against you politically. It happens, it, it cannot be in dispute. There's still one going on right now, it's reoccurring, that individual has actively campaigned against me during my original one, I couldn't figure out why, and it's because they get $50,000 a year from the person that I ran and beat. I've gone to a big fair, not fair, whatever it is, event that we funded, and we're one of the official supporters or, all that they, and actually, it was two, I forgot, the other one, Commissioner Cepeda was with me at, I forgot about that one, it was a, it was a Latin one. And all that they did was bash the governor. And we're now using people's property taxes to fund these organizations that are highly politically engaged, even though we have specific policies that says that they are not supposed to be. That is happening still today, and it's not right. So I thank you for the good presentation. I, I want to look over the three and a half million dollars a year thing, and the total number of NPOs, because, yeah, it's, it's, it's insane right now, it's, it's unmanageable is what it is. I want to understand the three and a half million dollars a year, and I'll just sit down and, and look at it. I'll be supportive of your annual reduction, I think a tiered step down from that. Staff, could you always easily identify which ones are like bona fide projects? Like, we created Crisis Center, I believe. I believe that we created that, it was internal, right? And then it was basically created by the county to become an external organization. I'm pretty sure that that's right. So, and, and, and that's fine, I think that, you know, the homeless services partners that we have, I mean, it is what it is, we're, we're going to have to provide that service. So you just tell me what you want, and you're going to be seeing me in the supporting side of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen.
So I'd just like to ask, since today is a workshop, when do you, when do you propose that we actually vote on some kind of a motion related to this?
Well, since we can only talk about these things during workshops, which is ridiculous, but I understand the, the sunshine law, I would have it come up as a future, a future commissioner item. I would certainly work with staff in Tom's office to bring back maybe a strike-through underlying of the particular policy that is going to be referenced here, and then have either Tom or Kevin bring it around and see, you know, where everyone will fall on that, and then to bring it back to a board meeting to be voted on. I would say
Okay, well
I would say the sooner the better, because as we approach our budget, these are some of the things that we can, again, look at, ways to take care of our own without having to worry about Governor DeSantis, or the Clerk's Office, or the Doge Committee doing it for us.
All right, well, I will certainly keep an open mind, and to me, the devil's in the details, and I'll be happy to take a look at it and let the staff know what I think. I think that it's going to be important, you said that certain organizations were going to be exempt, and it's going to be very important to understand which ones are going to fall into that category before I make any kind of final decision on how to vote, but I, I don't think there's anything wrong with going through the exercise and seeing, seeing what we can do.
I appreciate you keeping an open mind. One of the things that, you know, I was thinking about this when I was going through this, we hold our employees to a higher standard, we hold our people who put in for RFPs to a higher standard than we do for nonprofits. They have to have performance measurements before they get money, and before we give them increases, before they can be awarded and stuff, so at the very least, those are some of the things that I'd like to see changed in, in the policy as well.
I, you know, I think it's important not to brush everyone with the same broad brush, that we look at these items individually, because, you know, there's tremendous variance in the quality of some of the nonprofits and the work that they do, and the level of importance that we would attach to it. But like I said, I will keep an open mind, and I'm, I'm happy to look over the materials that, that you've provided.
Can I make a couple of comments before we go to our next item? First of all, thank you, Commissioner Bowles, for bringing this forward. Appreciate, clearly you've put in a lot of work on this, I appreciate that. That was excellent comments from all the board members. I do think it's important to point out, and Commissioner Wilson did, did touch on this, we did take a pretty big step forward, you know, a couple of years ago in improving our processes, so as bad as it might be now, it was, it was actually worse. So I think we should point that out. And evidenced by the last couple of years, the total numbers trickled down from 20.6 now to where it is, 15.4, but you're right, there was an enormous, clearly, there was an enormous jump after fiscal year 15, then it went to 17, and then 70, and, but we have implemented some, some improvements that I think do go a long way. Commissioner Cohen brings up an excellent point about the broad brush thing, and that's what I know I went through last time, when we started, when we made our changes the last go-around, and I imagine staff will provide the charts again, and the breakdowns, and all that stuff, showing the different categories, and I know, at least for me, sometimes there's, what I notice is, not every commissioner defined core service the same way. And so that was a bit of a challenge at times, and I guess what I'm getting at, that I look forward to having the, the discussion, I certainly believe we can do better, we can tighten things up, we can make improvements. May not, end of the day, support every single thing here, but I think a lot of it I will, and will continue to improve it. And I look forward to the discussion, and thank you for the work you've done on this, and bringing it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that, and thank you all for your consideration.
Okay, Bonnie?
Thank you. And now we'll completely switch gears, and we're going to talk about the solid waste department, and some of the things that Damian and his team have been working on as we go forward into the next several years.
Good afternoon, Damian.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Good afternoon, Commissioners, this is Damian Trammell, the Solid Waste Management Department Director. This is a workshop, I will provide a brief overview of the Solid Waste Management Department system, discuss some opportunities and challenges we face in 2026, and present a proposed three-year rate plan for your consideration. Commissions, I will start by going over the department's vision and mission. Our vision is to create a long-term, sustainable, and financially responsible integrated solid waste system. We will ensure that there's enough disposal capacity for both will remain a top priority. We provide services to over 325,000 single-family homes each week. Our collection system includes two garbage pickups, one yard waste collection, and one recycling collection every week. Totally approximately 1.2 million services provided weekly. Our residential and commercial collection services are contracted out to three service providers, Republic Services of Florida, Waste Management of Tampa, and FCC Environmental Services. Our infrastructure includes a landfill, a waste energy facility, also known as our resource recovery facility, two transfer stations, three donation sites, two yard waste processing sites, five community collection centers for residents to drop off, and three household hazardous waste collection events held monthly. We generate over 1.2 million tons of waste each year. 44% is being disposed of at our resource recovery facility, which is operating at design capacity. 41% is being disposed of at our landfill, and we are recycling approximately 15% of the remaining waste. Our solid waste services goes beyond just curbside collection. In addition to weekly curbside pickup, our solid waste customers are, can self-haul bulky waste items such as appliances, furniture, paint, batteries, electronics to our community collection centers six days a week, at no extra cost. Household chemicals and other hazardous waste can also be dropped off free of charge at rotating locations. We have a dedicated team that repairs and delivers roll carts upon request. Additionally, we offer a senior discount, providing a 33% reduction in disposal fees for residents age 65 and older, which is a very popular program. We also provide a hardship credit for qualifying residents, which offers a $68 credit against the assessment for eligible customers. For customers who are unable to wheel their cart to the curb, we offer a backdoor pickup service at no additional cost. Communities can apply to our community cleanup program, where we bring large roll-off containers to their neighborhoods for disposing of bulky waste items. This program is also very popular, and is offered at no additional cost. Lastly, our solid waste department proudly operates three donation sites in partnership with Goodwill. Customers can choose to donate items instead of disposing of them at our community collection centers. Commissions, overall, we offer a very comprehensive and effective solid waste management system. Bear with me. Forty years ago, the board instructed the solid waste department to, to construct a resource recovery facility. This facility is, generates garbage, and generates electricity. The electricity is sold through a power purchase agreement. The main objective of the facility is to minimize the amount of waste sent to our landfill. The resource recovery facility has been operating at full design capacity for nearly 10 years, and we are unable to expand its capabilities. As I mentioned earlier, we generate approximately 1.2 million tons of garbage annually. The resource recovery facility processes 44% of this waste, and 41% continues to be sent to our landfill for disposal due to the resource recovery facility reaching its capacity limit. We are adding approximately 5,000 new customers to our service area each year, and this trend is expected to continue. A growing population leads to increased waste generation, placing additional pressure on our solid waste system. Between the years of 2020 and 2023, we averaged 450,000 tons of waste landfill annually. As the chart shows, in 2024, we land filled 630,000 tons, which is nearly 200,000 tons more, an increase of 38%. This rise in landfill volume was partly due to the temporary closure of the City of Tampa disposal facility, as well as the impact of Hurricane Milton. However, it is important to mention that while most of the debris from Hurricane Milton was successfully diverted from our landfill, a small percent was disposed of at our landfill, which had an impact on our system. Commissioner, just bear with us a minute. Commissioners, I will, we've had some technical difficulties, so we will do it the old-school way, how about that? Okay? All right, we are looking at the Hurricane Milton impact. Commissioners, we have learned a valuable lesson this year. One or two events can have a major impact on our disposal system. I previously mentioned that we observed a staggering 38% in the amount of solid waste disposed of at our landfill compared to previous years. This highlights the urgent need to expand our landfill. Acting quickly on this initiative is crucial, especially considering the potential impact of hurricanes, which pose a recurring threat. Securing permits and constructing a new section of the landfill typically takes several years, so every moment counts in efforts to address this critical issue. Our landfill is divided into 12 sections. The section currently in use is projected to fill up by the year 2030. To continue disposing of solid waste at the landfill beyond 2030, we need to transition operations to a new section of the landfill. The total cost of the landfill expansion is estimated at 70 five years left in the current section before expansion becomes necessary. If the landfill reaches its end of useful life, we will need to transport waste to another disposal site. Currently, the cost for the county to dispose of waste at our landfill is approximately $35 to $40 per ton. That does not even include the transportation of the waste. Transporting waste out of the county solid waste system will likely double our cost per ton. The second challenge involves our residential curbside collection services. We have three haulers providing these services, each contract expiring in 2029. Each of these contracts includes an annual provision for cost adjustments based on the Consumer Price Index. Additionally, we have other disposal service contracts that also incorporate annual rate adjustments based on the Consumer Price Index. Last year, I presented a rate plan that projected a 9% rate increase for fiscal year 2026. However, we were successful with reducing our operating expenses, and we delayed the construction of a new mixed waste processing facility, which allowed us to lower our proposed rate increase by 1.2%, bringing it down to 7.8%. The proposed 7.8% rate increase for fiscal year 2026 will support our expanding of the landfill and will allow us to meet our annual contractual cost increases. Of the 7.8% increase, 5.9% will fund the landfill expansion in 2026, 1% will support the annual cost increases from the residential collection service contracts, and 0.9% will help cover other annual contractual disposal cost increases. We offer for your consideration, Commissioner, a rate increase of 7.8% for the residential assessment, again, for fiscal year 2026. If approved, this change will result in an annual increase of $37.33, which is approximately $3.11 per month. Of the proposed $37.33 annual increase, $4.47 will be allocated towards our residential collection service contracts, $4.65 will help support our contractual disposal cost increases, and $28.21 will be used to fund landfill expansion. Looking ahead, we anticipate future increases of 6% for fiscal year 2027, and another 6% for fiscal year 28. This rate plan addresses our $77 million landfill expansion costs, our annual obligation to adjust the residential collection service contracts in accordance with the Consumer Price Index, and the increasing cost of our operation. Commissioners, we are actively exploring two opportunities that have the potential to help mitigate future rate increases. The first opportunity is the development of a new renewable natural gas plant, which will be at no cost to the county or our ratepayers. Our landfill generates gas primarily from the decomposition of organic waste, which requires treatment. We have the chance to capture this gas and generate some revenue from it. The renewable natural gas plant was carefully selected and is expected to bring revenue back to the county, demonstrating our commitment to finding effective solutions. The second opportunity we are actively exploring involves reducing the additional services we currently offer at our facilities free of charge. At present, we collect up to two cubic yards of yard waste from every customer every week, and we allow these same customers the opportunity to bring up to two tons of yard waste to our facility at no additional cost. Additionally, residents can bring up to 12 tires per year to our site at no extra charge. Our new approach, which we plan to implement by fiscal year 2027, will include charging residents who bring in additional yard waste and tires to our facility. We will also reduce the volume of bulky items that can be disposed of at our facility free of charge. This change will help mitigate future rate increases once fully implemented. Commissioners, we understand that cost increases can be challenging for our residents. However, it's important to state that the reason for the increase is beyond the county's control and is a reflection of the actual cost of providing solid waste services. Our next steps. On June 4th, we plan to return before the board to request a public hearing for August 6th to adopt the FY '26 solid waste rates and fees. With that, I'm open for questions.
Thanks for giving the presentation. Commissioner Wosel.
Thanks. This will be real brief. You know, we have a lot of hats, and one of them is that we also run this business, which is kind of, in my view, different than the county government. You're a business entity, and business costs increased, and the cost of that business is going to scale with. I don't think this is a lot. My one big question on your graph that showed the annual usage, I'm very confused. It seems like the people of 2020 used a lot more trash per capita than 2024. I didn't know if that was a scaling issue, if that was true, but I guess we were a pretty trashy society in 2020, because that was a lot more per capita. I wanted to make sure that that big red portion for the City of Tampa, that they were charged, and I just, for anybody looking at this, I already know the answer. I wanted to get it on the record for them, that we charged them for the use, not only for the service, but for the, I guess, land use of the residents of unincorporated or not having to buy a new landfill based off of that use. They paid their own portion of that, right? The city did.
Commissioner, that is absolutely correct, yes.
Right. My other question that arose during the conversations, and I would gather that maybe Bonnie, Tom, Kevin could help figure this out. I'm not advocating for collection of tons of money to sit around and collect dust, but they're clever and could figure out how maybe sell bonds or something. But it would seem what's the better way to do this, if this was my business that I was running, and I knew that I was going to have long-term projected capital needs, especially as we project all of this growth, and we're now properly studying urban service area expansion for the first time in like 35 years, is that for us users now, and continued into the future, that we're just charged a very small capital fee on every bill for our waste collection, because we're using that capital, right? We're using that land, us, right now, not the people of today. They didn't use the land, maybe they just moved here four or five years ago. They didn't use it from 20 years ago, but we're going to front-load it onto everybody that's here for the next three years, and then that goes away. And then future residents did not contribute to that new landfill. It would just seem like the more equitable way would be that we predicted that, and we just had an ongoing, small, we know what our needs are going to be, we know where they're going to be. So you guys have smart staff that'll know, hey, we should start looking, if we're going to try and drive growth here, we should start looking at potential landfill needs in that area as well. And we just have a small, ongoing capital campaign off of every bill, because we're the ones that are filling up the current landfill, not future customers. And then they can take that money, and they can invest it or sell whatever bonds you guys do. And then also, it avoids the need for us to front-load it a heavier price, even though this isn't that much, over a three-year period. It's just, it's always kind of there, and we're running a smart business that predicts our future land acquisition capital campaigns, and we're predicting that. Staff's helping coordinate through our real estate division on where that might be, through the planning commission, and there we have the funds, and it's no emergency rate increases. It's just, it's just a plan for, as any business model would predict, if we're, if we were a private industry, we know that we're going to need large land needs for future, and we're going to need future capital funding campaign needs to buy that landfill. And we're just doing that over a period of time slowly, and we're making sure that we get some value out of the funds that we're collecting. You're not going to bond it away for 30 years, obviously, but there's probably something out there that keeps it from just depreciating. And then, and then you avoid this situation, and you've planned for the future before maybe the growth even gets there, and the value of the land is scaled up on you and leveraged against your department. So it just seems like something that we should consider, and I would be supportive of that, and I'm going to be supportive of this small nominal increase. So thanks for bringing it forward.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I do think that the proposed rate increases are a little steep, and I think it's important to divide what's proposed here into the two categories. Clearly, the category that is, that we're going to have to definitely spend the money is in order to stay in compliance with our solid waste contracts. I think that the cost of doing business is going up, the cost of compensating people is going up, and the rates are going to have to take that into account. However, I do agree with Commissioner Wosel that there, it probably would be a good idea to look at whether or not we can finance the expansion of the landfill with something more creative and larger than just tacking money onto people's bills for three consecutive years. It seems to me that we could look at bonding, we could look at perhaps whether or not some CIT money could be used, but I think that we've got to come up with a plan that doesn't put the entire onus on three years' worth of ratepayers. We've got to spread it out a little bit and ease the burden of the increase. We all recognize that the cost of things is going up, but anything that we can do to mitigate and to make it as manageable as possible for people, I think we ought to try to do. And there's no question that we're going to have to expand the landfill, but as we heard, that's only a temporary solution. That's only going to buy us 10 or 15 years. So I think, I just think that there's more work that we have to do before we get to a final decision on what the rates are going to be. I want to say at the outset, I very much appreciate the staff's work on this. All of us were briefed, we all had an opportunity to weigh in, and what I'm saying is not a surprise to the staff, because I said it on our call, but we've got to see if we can perhaps draw this rate increase down just a little bit and spread out the cost of the new landfill expansion in a little bit more of an equitable way.
Commissioner Bowles?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just had a question, and maybe you can answer, or maybe Tom. The 5.9% that's on Slide 12, which is part of the 7.8s, we've got for landfill expansion 5.9, collection CPI, and contract operational 1 and 0.9. That should cover that $26 million to 5.9%. Is that what's predicted?
It is, yes.
Cover that 100%?
So Commissioner, the actual amount will cover a portion of the landfill, the cost of $26 million. We'll be using some of our rate reserves to offset the additional amount.
Okay.
So the actual amount will bring in about $9 million in FY '26. We will still need to fund the remaining portion of that through rate reserves.
And kind of the second part, so 26.4 for next year, so we have roughly $17 million in reserves?
Yes, we do. Yes, we will, yes.
So, and then in '27 and '28, looking out, would that roughly be about the same? Because I think in your slide, you predict about 6% change.
Yeah, it will, it will be, Commissioner, okay.
Yeah, roughly?
Yes, it will be. So here's what, let me just maybe give a little more context to it, if you don't mind. The actual plan is going to bring it back, again, about a third of the cost. We will use some of our rate reserves to kind of fund the portion within each year. Over time, we will pay back that money to the rate reserves, right? So we're going to need, we're going to need to utilize some of our money from our rate stabilization fund, we call it the rate reserve fund, either one, you can choose for how you want to name it. Then from there, over time, we will end up paying back that money to our, to our actual rate reserve fund. I think what's important to mention here is that I think all the commissions have great ideas, and I think we are in line with, in terms of establishing a, some sort of account set aside, so we don't have to deal with this in the future. I think that's what we're doing now. So we have three years. So we have, we're trying to improve the rate 7.8% in 2026, and then again, we're trying to do it '27, '28. What would happen is, we won't be reducing the rate, but the fund, once the actual landfill expansion is paid for, we will utilize those funds to put in a rate, into a reserve, establish a reserve fund, to ensure that we can cover future expansions. So it's very similar to what I think Commissioner Wosel, and maybe yourself, is trying to allude to. We are aligned with that.
So just to be clear, at the end of '28, if everything goes according to plan, we're not rolling back rates 6% because we built the landfill, we're going to carry that forward?
Yes, we will, we will, yes. We have to put back the money. We have to put back the money. Yes, we will, yes, yes.
Bonnie, do you want to say something?
If I can just go before her, Mr. Chair, I think she can answer mine at the same time. Your rate increase is only for six years, I mean, excuse me, for three years, correct?
We're showing three years now, right.
So then, when you're responding, then I guess I'm confused. If it's disappearing after three years, how could you possibly be collecting a small nominal additional amount for future land acquisition aids?
Thank you. We're only showing the three-year, I'm sorry, the rate increase isn't going to stop after three years. There'll be still some increases that will still occur into the future related to the haulers and various other projects that may come about, but we're just looking at the three-year plan. We didn't want to just show one year. We thought it was important to show all three years, because of the impact is over three. But what I was going to say is, and Damian didn't really toot his own horn about this, is about the operational efficiencies that he has identified in his department, because we are trying to do whatever we can to keep that rate down, especially in that first year. So partly spreading it out over time, and Commissioner, I completely agree with you that this isn't something that just these current ratepayers should pay for. This should be something that we spread over time. And I always like the combination of some pay-as-you-go and some bonding, so we always want to look at that. What is going to be the nature of the capital project? How long is it going to last? What is appropriate bonding? And so that is always what we look at as we go forward. But I did want to toot your horn a little bit and talk about some of those operational efficiencies, because that was almost $9 a year that you were able to drive down on the rate increase.
Commissioner Wosel?
Thanks. So this, I just want to be clear, so this is a permanent increase to the rate, not a three-year rate increase? Because that's what I thought this whole time.
Hmm. Okay. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Excellent discussion. Look forward to our next one. Bonnie, do you need to add anything else, or Damian, anything else?
No, we thank you, because we know that you don't have the opportunity to talk about these things, and we needed a little bit more time to go over these complicated items during a workshop, so thank you.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned.
that this isn't something that just these current ratepayers should pay for. This should be something that we spread over time. And I always like the combination of some pay-as-you-go and some bonding. So we always want to look at that. What is going to be the nature of the capital project? How long is it going to last? What is appropriate bonding? And so that is always what we look at as we go forward. But I did want to toot your horn a little bit and talk about some of those operational efficiencies because that was almost $9 a year that you were able to drive down on the rate increase.
Commissioner Wustol?
Thanks. So this, I just want to be clear. So this is a permanent increase to the rate, not a three-year rate increase? Because that's what I thought this whole time.
Hmm. Okay. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Excellent discussion. Look forward to our next one. Bonnie, do you need to add anything else? Or Damian, anything else?
No, we thank you because we know that you don't have the opportunity to talk about these things. And we needed a little bit more time to go over these complicated items during a workshop. So thank you.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned.